Well, it's early in the morning and I can't get it right. I had a little fight with my baby last night. It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. I went to the places where we used to go. Went to her house, she don't live there no more. It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Hit me one time, sir. Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Hit me one time, sir. Well, it's early in the morning and I can't get it right. I had a little fight with my baby last night. It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. I went to the places where we used to go. Went to her house, she don't live there no more. It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Hit me one time, sir. I went to your girlfriend's house, but she was not about it. Went to her daddy's house, and he began to shout. It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Yeah, it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. I went to the diner to get me something to eat. The waiter looked at me and now he said, "You show the beat." It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Lord, it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Hit me, Brian. I had a lot of money when I started out. I lost my baby in the morning and out. It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Man, it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Boys, it's early in the morning and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Hello, Josephine. How do you do? Do you remember me, baby? Like I remember you. You used to laugh at me and holler. I used to walk you home. I used to hold your hand. You used to use my umbrella every time it rained. You used to cry so much. Lord, it was a crying shame. Come on, Brian. You used to live over yonder down on the railroad track. When it rained, couldn't walk. Had to tote you on my back. Used to try to make believe. There won't no days like that. Hit me, Tommy. Hello, Josephine. How do you do? Do you remember me, baby? Like I remember you. You used to laugh at me and holler. You used to laugh at me and holler. You used to laugh at me and holler. Ooh. One, two. Whoa. Bop, do, tay.
Oh, what a girl.
Bop, do, tay.
Oh, what a girl.
Booty, ow, booty, ow. Booty, tay.
Booty, tay.
Bop, do, tay.
Oh, what a girl.
On a train, I met a dame. Some kind of hipster. Man, she was a real dog dare. She was pretty from New York City. Walking down that old fair lane with a heel and a hoe. Man, I just couldn't let her go. Now, get along, sweet little woman, get along. On your way, get along, sweet little woman, get along. On your way with a heel and a hoe. I just couldn't let her go. Let me hear. The train kept rolling.
All night long.
The train kept rolling.
All night long.
Man, the train kept rolling.
All night long.
The train kept rolling.
All night long.
Well, the train kept rolling, but I still wouldn't let her go. Go, go. Made a stop, run out of cookie. She must have thought I was a real dog jerk. Got off the train in El Paso. Looked so good, child, couldn't let her go. Get along, sweet little woman, get along. Oh, yeah. On your way, get along, sweet little woman, get along. On your way with a heel and a hoe. Man, I just wouldn't let her go. The train kept rolling.
All night long.
The train kept rolling.
All night long.
Yeah, the train kept rolling.
All night long.
Well, the train kept rolling.
All night long.
Well, the train kept rolling. I still wouldn't let her go. Thanks a lot for coming to the Natty Bowls. Yeah, baby.
Mom, should we pick a place to meet?
If you're not home, should we go to the neighbors?
Should I pick up Sophia at the babysitter's house?
There's no reason not to have a plan in case of a terrorist attack.
How do we keep in touch with each other if the phones don't work?
And some extremely good reasons why you should.
If we can't make it home, who will pick us up?
Talk to your family about what you would do in case of an emergency. For more information, go to www.reddy.gov.
La, 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 la. La, 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 la. A donde tu vas?
La, 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 la.
O quien tu te vas?
La, 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 la.
O te vas a Panamá?
La, 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 la.
Este pobre canoero.
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 La, 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 la.
A long time ago, yeah, for you was gone. When I was still single, him life was great. I held his job as a traveling salesman. It kept me moving from state to state to state to state. Now, now, I'm standing on the corner of Lafayette, state of Louisiana. Wondering where a city boy could go. To maybe get a little conversation, drink a little red wine. Catch a little bit of Cajun girls dancing masai de cole. Well, long come this young girl. She's pretty as a prayer, but sweet as an apple on Christmas Day. I said, "Good gracious, can this be my love? If that's my forever, Lord, let us pray." Well, now, I'm standing on the corner of Lafayette, state of Louisiana. Wondering what their city boy could do. To maybe get a little conversation, drink a little red wine. Dance to the music of Clifton Shanina, the king of the bayou. Well.
Please call and roll.
I'm here.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Okay. Next, the first item is council comments, and I'll just start off with a couple of quick things. And then roll it over to Councilmember Siemens. The first thing is, I wanted to point out to my colleagues that we have an invitation to the District 20 reception in Annapolis a week from tonight. And I realized that we could actually go to that since next week is holiday, and our meeting will be Tuesday night next week. So I would encourage as many of us as possible to go down there. The reception is from six to eight. I got a copy of the email invitation today, and I will be happy to forward it to everybody. It was only once I looked at it and thought, "Oh, I don't think this works," that I realized that it did, so I haven't forwarded it yet. I believe they said maybe the head councilmember Wright's email address and send it to him, but I don't think anybody else got it. So I will send that along, and if anybody's interested, we can carpool and go down there.
Great. It's in Annapolis?
Yes. Six to eight next Monday night. Also, in Annapolis, I will be attending the Maryland Mayor's Association Conference, which is this Thursday and Friday. And that'll be an opportunity to talk to legislators and also to Mayor Malley's administration. A lot of his folks will be around, so that will be a good opportunity to pursue anything that we need to talk to anybody about in Annapolis as well. I also brought with me this week's information from the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee. I thought I might pass it up and down the dais. This is what we get every week during the session when bills get put in and the committee gets information on what bills might be of interest to municipalities. There's a cover sheet with probability of success, and then I printed out one bill which might be of interest, which is about the possibility of getting State Highway Administration to plant trees on state highways. The only kicker is, as drafted, we would have to pay for it. But who knows what the deal is? Who knows what the prospects of the bill are? But if anybody wants to look at it, I'll pass it one direction and then the other, and you can take a look. Also, I will be testifying tomorrow night in Rockville at the county's CIP hearing on trying to get our two bridges into the county CIP. I did the same thing last year and it went nowhere. We'll try again this year. And finally, I wanted to let people know that the Piney Branch Pool will be opening this week. It will be opening on Wednesday, which will be February 11th. And Councilmember Siemens has some of the details about getting passes and where they're available and when, and how this will work.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Ron Wiley, the executive director of Adventist Community Services, sends his apologies for not being here tonight. He's struggling with some of the same issues as some of us have dealt with, with an aging mother and having to arrange for care for her. But he did call me at 5:30 today and let me know that all the paperwork is finally signed, and the Piney Branch Elementary School Pool will be open beginning Wednesday morning. Pool hours are Monday through Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. And then again, Monday through Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And again, Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The pool passes, my wife Joyce was here tonight, thanks to the courtesy of the Recreation Department to sell pool passes from 6 o'clock until our meeting time tonight. And she will be here again tomorrow night from 6 until 7 o'clock to sell pool passes. The passes and also general admission will be accepted at the pool during the regular pool hours. All those hours for right now are open public swimming times. There will be programs for swimming classes and other activities, structured programs. The Winkler Pool Management Company is handling the scheduling of those programs. And so anyone who's interested in bringing a program to the pool should contact Adventist Community Services at 301-585-6557. That number again was 301-585-6557. Thank you. Oh, and I did want to mention that, since I have the floor, Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Our resident peace delegate, Pat Lovelace, who's here for most of the council meetings, is out ill again tonight, but he sent his regards. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Clay.
First, I just want to say a thank you to the city staff and the District 20 delegation for finally getting some progress on S.H.A. On a couple items we've been working on, they've, I noticed that they fixed the guardrail along Piney Branch near Philadelphia finally. So if your car hits, you can be confident you won't go into someone's front yard because it's rusted out. And they've also finally turned on the walk signals, at least at Piney Branch in Philadelphia. I haven't been up near Ray yet. It's also at Ray, so I know people were very happy when they saw the walk signals go in. And now, six months, nine months later, they're on. So that's, that's good. And I know the city staff worked diligently on both those issues to get S.H.A. to move forward. Second thing I just wanted to mention is that the Old Town Residents Association is hosting Chris Barclay on February 11th at 7:30 at the home of Ray Scannell and Marion Shapiro at 118 Park Avenue, and encourage people to go. Chris Barclay is a member of the Board of Education. And then lastly, just wanted to sort of preview that WSSC is planning on doing some sort of community forum to talk to the residents about the many issues they've had. Members of the District 20 delegation met with WSSC, and they provided a lot of the information that the city staff put together about the numerous water main breaks and late projects that have been going on in the city and poor repair, jobs they've done on the repaving. And they want to work with, I think they've already probably talked to you about this, Bruce, but they may have not been able to get ahold of you because I know you've been very sick. I'm glad to see you back. But that they want to do something that's sponsored by as many resident associations as would like to join in, and the city and the delegation, to have some WSSC representatives talk to the residents. I think we should still try and have the WSSC come to the council and answer our questions as well. So those are my comments. Thank you.
And if I can just piggyback on one thing that you said in terms of the work that S.H.A. did, I would say it was a, it was a mixed result, that they finally got the lights at Tacoma Junction fixed. It's just too bad that it took about four days to do it. And I know that there were, there was quite a bit of angst about safety of kids getting across the junction to go back and forth to school. And there were some people who had some issues with the responsiveness of the police in addressing that, and that did get worked out in the end. And given the amount of work going on in the junction, I would say that we would have to assume that that type of thing will happen again, and that we need to be ready to address it as soon as it does. I did observe that, in my sense was that, at least as far as car movement while the lights were out, that with the all lights blinking red, traffic seemed to move a whole lot better than with the program that State Highway has at the junction. And that might be an opportunity to point out to State Highway that their programming just doesn't work there. And there've been a lot of issues about the nexus of state highways, WSSC work in those state highways, the fire station project, and the state of the infrastructure in those state highways where that work has been taking place. And I think we're going to have to follow that and try and coordinate pretty closely and get state agencies and state, state and county influence on other agencies to make sure that our residents and everybody who comes through Tacoma Park, whether on foot, on bicycle, or in a car, can get through safely and expeditiously. So I think we'll need to keep looking at that. Councilmember Clay.
Well, you said all, well, not all.
Sorry.
You said probably three quarters of the things that I was going to say. But it's not going to stop me from repeating them because I'm in a bad mood. All right. So a bad mood about that stuff, not in general. In general, I'm in a happy mood. Sligo Creek Parkway is finally open.
I wanted to say that.
I think it mostly ran through, I think it mostly ran through my ward, so I'm going to claim that one. There's railing on Sligo Creek Parkway somewhere between Aspen and Jackson Avenue that was, according to the residents, you know, beat up before WSSC arrived, but has been obliterated now. So I don't know if we can get them to, to deal with that. I think it was at least functional before, and now it needs to be replaced. I know before, the deal was that if they ruined curbs or other things while they were doing their work, that they were responsible for replacing them. In that line of thought, there's a chunk of asphalt on the sidewalk along Ethan Allen Avenue. Avenue, across from the church and the 300 block, where WSSC came and dug more giant holes in the wall -- in the road, and then put in four patches. And then where they cut through our sidewalk, just patched it with a quick asphalt patch, and it's ugly. I was glad to see that Palmer Lane was on the list for getting stimulus money. I would like to say that Flower Avenue is hurting pretty bad, and I know we're going to have to wait till March or April to see it repaved, but in the meantime, I'm glad the Public Works Director is here because I got a call last night from someone there that says that they don't see any evidence of any street cleaning going on at all. I said I thought maybe it was because there's so much gravel in the road that if you were to vacuum it, you'd vacuum all the gravel up, and it would all be in your mulch. But I'm not sure why, but it would be great if we could get some assistance to them. They've been going out with their own brigades and trying to keep things clear so that it stays out of all the drains, but it's not the same as having a machine go down. So any assistance there would be greatly appreciated. The crossing guard plan for the junction, I wanted to say essentially the same thing, not to harp on what happened, but just that it's happened a couple times now. It'd be great if we could have a plan for when that happens. And I know that when the police chief came and spoke to us, at one point, he talked about using the volunteers and police program, and that was part of the presentation last year during the budget session, but I don't know if anything has happened on that or not. But I don't know if we could get some folks who would be willing to go and do that. I mean, I would do it with training, but I wouldn't want to just, you know, jump out in front of traffic at the junction. So I think we should have a plan for those intersections when they go down because you know that State Highway isn't going to come help. And then about the meeting with the -- meeting with State Highway and WSSC, I would like to do -- I mean, it'd be great to haul them in front of us and scream at them for five hours because I'm sure that we would have to commit the entire council meeting and maybe start at 6:00 and plan on going till 2:00 a.m. so that all the people just in my ward would have a chance to say what they want to say to WSSC and S.H.A. But if we could structure some kind of a meaningful dialogue that was about more than just, you know, unloading on them so that we could come to some resolution and work with them, I think that would be important. And I think it would be important to bring our state and county representatives to those meetings. I almost feel like our state representatives have some greater level of control over S.H.A. than the county seems to have over WSSC. I was reading the article in the Gazette last week, and, you know, it essentially was saying the same thing. So I would like us to structure some kind of a meaningful conversation with them, and to the extent that they cross over on the work that's being done in Carroll Avenue to do that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper?
Well, I was glad to see Sligo Creek Parkway open. And they even -- they did, in fact, clean the road, which is good because there's a lot of leaves and debris in it. But the paving job they did to cover up their digging matches the paving job they did on Erie Avenue and several other streets, which is to say, it's -- good news is it's paved, the bad news is it's not very smooth, and it's quite not very level, and it's certainly not smooth. And I wonder, does anyone know whether they're going to come back and do a finishing layer there? Okay, that's good to hear. Also, while I'm on the subject of the WSSC, they seem to be leaving what one neighbor called "socks," S-O-C-K-S. And they're -- I wouldn't call them socks. They're enormous cloth-covered things. They usually stick in front of a drain to prevent all their debris going down into the Chesapeake, but not always. Sometimes they're just stuck on the side of the road, and you can't figure out why it's there. I assume that they'll pick those up, or am I dreaming? Okay, that's good to hear.
Was that a dream? I didn't hear it.
Daryl shook her head yes that they picked up. The other thing is I have an announcement. The corner of Flower and Piney Branch on the Tacoma Park corner, the one corner out of the four that's ours, is finally going to get some renovation, and there will be a meeting to discuss what they're going to do with the auto-related buildings and the little shops that are there on Wednesday, February 18th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Police Satellite Office at 8505 Piney Branch Road. It's near Veronica's Cafe, I think. And it's a good time to see the plans, ask questions, make any comments about what Su Wong is going to do. I urge people in that general area to go to that. I'll be there. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
More on Tacoma Junction and traffic from a little bit different angle, and that's the angle of my constituent, who was the one who brought it to my attention, and then it came on to Bruce and the chiefs. And I asked her during the course of that day, which was, was it Friday or Monday? Well, I've forgotten, but I asked her what it was like there. She agreed that no lights or blinking red lights makes for smoother traffic flow, so that sounds pretty good. And that kind of makes me think it's sort of like a traffic circle without the circle, which, interesting concept. At one point, she said the pedestrian lights came back on, and then it was safe. And I asked her, were the lights still flashing red when pedestrian lights were on? She didn't know, but it made me think blinking red lights and an on-demand pedestrian crossing might be the best of all worlds. You have a traffic circle with no circle where it's kind of -- and then on-demand pedestrian crossing, so you satisfy pedestrians, and you let people make up their own -- have their own choices as far as getting through the intersection effectively. So I thought that was a -- I don't know if that's such a radical idea, that State Highway would just dismiss it out of hand, but I'd like to put that into the hopper when we have that conversation. That's all.
Anything else? Okay. Next item is, there are no additional agenda items, and just the quick scheduling update. As I mentioned earlier, we will be meeting next Tuesday, February 17th because of the holiday. And assuming that people have realized that the item that we have on tonight, which was originally scheduled as a resolution adopting any city priorities for federal stimulus program projects, is a work session, so we have the resolution adopting those if we decide we have some tonight next week. And we also have a work session discussion of the commercial revitalization overlay zone and clarification of procedures, which I think we need to talk about in terms of long-range planning and how we might want to deal with some things that aren't quite clear in the rules as currently configured. Then on the following week, that February 23rd, we have the now postponed, I think it was from tonight, the discussion of the council grants program. And the final thing I just want to point out to folks is that March 9th, we will have an update from Councilmember Mark Elrich, and then a month later, April 6th, we will have an update from Councilmember George Leventhal. We're still trying to schedule Councilmember Valerie. Next item is the public comment period. If anybody would like to make a comment about anything that is either not on our agenda or that is a work session item for tonight, you're welcome to do so. And if you'd please, under the microphone, identify yourself and keep your comments Or take a detour to the dais.
Hi, my name is Rosalind Grigsby. I'm Executive Director of the Old Tacoma Business Association and Main Street Tacoma. I just wanted to give you an update and a little bit of a year-end review on some of the things that have been happening in Old Tacoma. What you have in hand is a listing of business changes, new businesses, new business owners, expansions in 2008. Despite the economic circumstances, there's actually a lot of activity going on in Old Tacoma. And you also have a list of events that were in Old Tacoma in 2008, some of which OTPA sponsored alone, many of which we partnered with other organizations on. We continue to work on the facade improvement program. We have a total of 165,000 in grants from the State of Maryland for that project. We have spent about 65 -- well, let's see. The state has paid about 65,000 of that out. That's matching funds, so that's 130,000 in improvements. We have a number of reimbursement requests, which are sitting on somebody's desk right now at the state, and we've allocated all but about the remaining 30,000, I think. So we're looking at a total of over $300,000 in improvements to the Old Tacoma area out of that grant. We are nearing completion on a market analysis. That's community legacy money. We will have a meeting March 19th, which you're all invited. That'll be the preliminary findings of the market analysis. We drew a circle of a one-mile radius from the intersection of Carroll and Laurel to demarcate the area for the market analysis, so it includes the junction and the old town area and the metro area as well. But I think because of the nature of it, that it will have relevance to businesses throughout the Tacoma Park area, looking at market demand, gaps, leakage, that kind of thing. Our hope is that it will give local businesses some very needed, very tangible information to move forward. We continue to do joint promotions and events for businesses, as well as a lot of conversation, as you can imagine, on current economic situation and how that impacts our very immediate area. We invited Michael Schuman last week to discuss kind of the big picture of how local businesses can still thrive in this situation in view of the global economics as well. And we continue to move forward on retention of existing businesses, strengthening and revitalizing the area, and filling some remaining vacancies. We actually have a very low vacancy rate right now, given that the Old Taliana's face -- excuse me. Yes, I'll wrap it up. Any questions I could answer, I'd be happy to.
Councilmember Seans?
Thank you, Mayor. Roz, I'm hopeful that the market survey includes the forgotten business district along Maple Avenue, which includes the businesses at the corner of Maple and Sherman, and also those within the Park Ritchie Apartments.
The analysis, it will be relevant to them. The analysis is looking at the area, the demand, the residents, the -- what the businesses provide now, what additional aspects they might find profitable if they expanded in sort of forgotten areas. So I will -- obviously, I'll get the information to you. I'll make sure that the information gets to them as well because I think it will be of interest to them.
Yeah, and I think they do fall within that one-mile radius that you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, that was very helpful. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, the next item is the city manager's comments.
And we have one brief item this evening. Just to remind the council that our employee recognition event will take place this Thursday. Since the mayor will be out of town, Councilmember Barry will be subbing for him in terms of helping me present awards, and certainly if any council member is available to come, we would certainly welcome that. So that will be here at the building from 11 to 2:00. The awards ceremony will actually start about 12:30. That's it.
So we have one regular meeting agenda item, which is the first reading ordinance authorizing the FY09 budget amendment, number three. And I guess the city manager would like to provide some information on that?
Sure, I'll just provide some highlights. It's a fairly long budget amendment, as you may have noticed. Really, the center is on about half a dozen issues, and I'll just go through those very quickly. Several weeks ago, members of the Independence Day Committee appeared before the council to request some additional funding. At that meeting, the council verbally gave approval to increase the level of financial support for Independence Day activities from the present, $8,250, and to supplement that by an additional $11,000, primarily to help with certain large expenses such as fireworks. So the budget amendment that's before the council this evening would appropriate that additional $11,000 that you all talked about on January 21st. The current year budget, as the council probably recalls, includes our anticipated approximately $2 million in bond proceeds for the renovation of the existing public works facility. When the economy tanked basically in the fall, the Public Works Director and I spoke, and certainly the bond market at that time was pretty shaky, so people were slowing down projects mainly because you really couldn't get funding in that climate. So what we're recommending this evening is since that we will not actually be securing $2 million in bond proceeds this fiscal year, is that the council go ahead and amend the budget to basically reduce general fund revenues by the $2 million, and on the other side, basically take our capital expenses down by the same amount. This is basically just to avoid having extremely large variance by the end of the fiscal year. Also, back in the fall, the council had approved an ordinance awarding a new lease for copiers. As you may recall, we had an existing lease, but a number of the machines were not functioning well. The way our agreement with the company that we contracted with, Nauticon Imaging, is that they gave the city a cash payment of just about $30,000, with the proceeds of that basically being used to pay any outstanding balance on the preceding lease with United Business Machines. So the budget amendment before the council this evening would basically recognize that approximately $30,000 in revenue, and it would also bump up various departmental operating budgets to recognize the fact that each department is now paying for two copy leases for some period of time. The remaining things in the amendment primarily deal with the police department. During the fiscal year, the police chief made a decision to increase the staffing for the tactical enforcement unit, which is essentially our street crimes unit, from three members to four to better address community needs. We basically need to move the salary and benefit cost for that fourth TEU member from the operations division to the criminal investigations division, which is where the individual's now working. As we talked about a couple weeks ago, a number of the police department overtime accounts we're running over. We had a number of situations during the year where we ran special details, primarily some of the residential burglaries that were unfortunately occurring during the month of December. Earlier in 2008, we also had a number of commercial burglaries along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, both of which necessitated special overtime details. That accounts for some of the overages that we expect to see. We've also had some staffing vacancies and absences in certain divisions. So the proposed budget amendment three would basically move some funding within the police department operating budget to those overtime accounts. If you've read through the amendment, basically what we're proposing is that some of those overages be addressed by transferring the $55,000 in contractual funding for implementation of the speed camera program. In discussing this with the chief, he felt that the required program implementation could be handled with his existing staffing rather than hiring a contractor for the remainder of this fiscal year. The last item that's covered in the budget amendment has to do with the winter basketball program, which is a partnership between the rec department and the recreation committee. If you think back to last year's budget process, the council verbally authorized moving some money from the senior rec manager position, which was frozen for a period of time, and basically the council had indicated its willingness to basically take some of the savings from that position to basically be applied to any expenses associated with the winter basketball league. So in a nutshell, that's the items that are covered in the budget amendment before the council this evening.
I have one question. I want to understand the impact on the unappropriated reserve, and the revenues are increased by the copier amount, but the unappropriated reserve is decreased by the copier amount. And I know you've got to, you know, you've got to put it on both sides, but how did we end up decreasing the unappropriated reserve? Would it look like a wash?
It could be handled a couple ways, and actually, the finance director and I spent some time talking about that, whether -- what would be the best way of handling that? some time talking about that, whether, what would be the best way of handling that. You do have to recognize the revenue as a recognition, and you have to appropriate it. So basically, the unappropriated reserve is essentially a combination of two things in terms of why it's going down. It's the additional allocation for the copiers, as well as the $11,000 for the Independence Day Committee. Looking very blankly at me, Mayor Williams.
I followed the $11,000, but I guess I'm not quite sure why the unappropriated reserve went down when it seems like the money came in and it went to the departments. How did that get out the unappropriated reserve?
It doesn't actually go to the departments. We do not book revenues to individual operating budgets. It's basically recognized on the revenue side of the balance sheet, if you will, and the actual expenditure has to be appropriated, which is where you see the transfer from the unappropriated reserve. The net effect...
Is zero.
Is zero, but from an accounting standpoint...
But it ain't our unappropriated reserve.
Well, you still have, you still have plenty left.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just wondering how a wash takes a bite out of us.
If you look at the overall general fund, it doesn't. I mean, the alternative is you appropriate the revenue, which you have to recognize, and you allow all these, you know, departmental operating budgets to go over. So what you'd see is probably an underspending in the nondepartmental account, which is where the unappropriated reserve falls, and you'd see overages in every other budget.
That helps explain. Councilmember Robinson.
I'm a little confused with the Independence Day Committee. I guess I'm remembering that it went from 8250 to 11,000, and that there was that adjustment of 2,750. But what I'm reading here is that it's 82, that 8250 will remain, and then that an additional 11,000 is put in place. So I just, is that what we agreed to?
Yeah, I remember at the end, because I wanted to make sure the council was very clear on this point, as I specifically, could I ask, is it the council's intent to appropriate an additional $11,000? And I got a bunch of head nods. The issue if we did not do that, Councilmember Robinson, is because most of the committee's expenses fall very early in the fiscal year, of the $8,250 that was initially budgeted in FY 2009, I don't remember the exact figure, but over $7,000 was already spent by the time the council had its discussion in January.
So, so that, of that, this year it's 19250?
Correct.
Will that be ongoing, 19250 in years in the future, or thereabouts?
I think that's ultimately a matter for the council to discuss. I'm not suggesting you do that this evening.
But I guess, I guess the clarification is that the 8250 was for expenditures that came due this fiscal year.
Right.
We're adding 11,000 for the fireworks, but that, that coming due part is not going to wash itself out.
No.
It's just we're, it's doing, we're doing a catch-up on that figure as well as the fireworks. Am I right?
Yes. And my, I mean, obviously, we can talk about this at another meeting. My understanding from the council discussion was that there may be interest on the part of the council of continuing to assist the Independence Day Committee with paying for the cost of the fireworks. Obviously, that's a budget decision the council will ultimately need to make. But barring any direction from the council to the contrary, you will probably see the just under $20,000 amount in my recommended budget to the council, based on my understanding of your intent. But certainly, that's something the council can direct me to do otherwise, or even if it goes in my recommended budget, you have the discretion to basically deal with that during the budget process.
Okay.
And if I can remind folks that that discussion started out about money for the fireworks and ended up as money for the Fourth of July, not necessarily aimed toward the fireworks. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so we're not going to renovate the public works facility this year, is the, which, I should spend a lot of time thinking about that part, because it's definitely in need of renovation, would be the way, way to say it. I assume that this is just rolled over into next year?
What we will...
Well, yeah. It's what we were thinking about.
Right. Our intention, Darryl and I actually talked earlier today, we will be issuing a request for proposal for design services early next week, so we do expect the design part of the project to get underway this fiscal year.
Okay.
We just obviously, by the time we have to go out and get construction built, it's just that the construction will not happen. So we'll essentially rebudget the money for the construction next year.
But the intent, I, yeah, that, so the intention is to do it as soon as sort of possible and realistic?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, would somebody like to move first reading the ordinance?
Second.
Move by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Snipper. Is there any public comment on the ordinance at first reading? Any additional council comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, the ayes have it. Okay, so we will move to our first work session item, which is a discussion of the city's priorities for federal stimulus program. We have had a number of requests and thoughts that we submit something. The state has put together a bunch of information for municipalities. I believe we have something in our packet from Scott Hancock, executive director of MML. We had a long discussion at the legislative committee last week with Transportation Secretary Pocari about various transportation-related items that might go in. And the message that I took away from him was, for anything transportation-related, that it would essentially have to be ready to go. I don't remember exactly what the word was, but it was, it was some A-word, like authorized or adopted or something like that within a 90-day timeframe, and which they interpreted as essentially meaning that it had either already been put out to bid, or that it was withheld from going on the street because people didn't think it would go anywhere. So that it was really looking at very ready-to-go projects.
Probably, they wanted a logic in within a 90-day, that's what they said at the Transportation Board.
That, they didn't use that word, but it might have been another word for the same thing. So, Councilmember Wright.
I just was curious in that, in that meeting, did they suggest that money could actually go from the state directly to municipalities for road or sidewalk work? Because the memory got from Scott Hancock sort of suggested that it might have to be a state highway or adjacent to a state highway or somehow related to a state highway. So I was wondering if Secretary Pocari elaborated a little bit and suggested that it could be a city of...
I don't remember a clear direction on that from that discussion, either, you know, either way. I kind of got the sense that they were talking about, I didn't get a sense. Councilmember Wright.
At the transportation planning board meeting, they said that the monies would be allocated along basically the same formulas that they get allocated now. So to the extent that there's a percentage of money that's available for those activities, that should all flow through in the same percentages. There should be money across the board for different projects.
But the only thing we get from the state would be highway users or the, we don't get any money to do road repair from the state currently?
I have no idea.
No, just the highway user revenues.
Yeah. But that was what they had said, is that it's, they're gonna put it out in the same for revenue.
Yeah. I mean, that's my worry a little bit also, is I was watching one of the CNN programs and the transportation secretary was on, and he was talking specifically about the reason they're giving it to the states, the state transportation authority, is because of the infrastructure. The process infrastructure is already there for the federal government to be assured that the money's spent appropriately, and that it's not really going to flow to municipalities. So I think that might suggest that we want to try and really push or advocate for things that state highway would do, but would be within our city boundaries, like re-paving Carroll Avenue, or Ethan Allen, or doing the sidewalk on Piney Branch or something like that.
And one of the things that did get emphasized by Secretary Pocari was that any project would have to meet all of those federal standards and guidelines, including things like Davis-Bacon for wage rates, that if that stuff wasn't already in place, that it was going nowhere. There's also additional funding in other areas for things like infrastructure. And one thing that I noted in the memo from Scott Hancock was the possibility for money to be directed at clean water, including sewer and stormwater. And I wondered what information, if any, the city manager has about possibilities for what the city might be in a position to do with stormwater. And I know that there was also some possible discussion with another entity or entities within the city who were hoping to bundle something through the city, and I didn't know whether that was any possibility, and whether we wanted to go anywhere with that to hospital.
Okay. And I apologize for getting this to you also late, but at your places at the dais this evening, there's sort of an additional information sheet. If you look on the backside of the orange sheet, there is a project described called the Linden Avenue Project. I believe, Darryl may be able to help me out, I think there was some discussion about this when, maybe a year or so ago, when you and Ali were before the council, talking about kind of green projects and things we have done in stormwater. This was probably one project, in talking to Darryl and the city engineer, that may qualify. We're still obviously trying to all get our arms around what may or may not be eligible for stimulus funding. But this is an area where there is a, basically, a retaining wall, which essentially is showing serious signs of deterioration. And Darryl and the city engineer, I guess, have identified a project, which is described on the cover sheet, that probably would be eligible for some type of stimulus funding, whether or not it qualifies under the Maryland Department of Environmental Protection. I mean, it's really hard to tell, there's just not a lot of information out there right now. I think the one project that Darryl and I talked about are the application process. Even though no one knows what's going to be eligible for stimulus funding or what isn't, the state agency's actually taking applications with a deadline later this month. But this is one project that is fairly sizable, if you notice, the estimated cost is about $150,000, and that at least we think is worth pursuing. I think, if I may, getting to, before I forget, Councilmember Wright's question about, suggestion about state projects that may qualify. We actually had some discussion with S.H.A. last week, because I think initially, as the staff talked about postal stimulus projects, to their first priority would be helping S.H.A. get money to fix some of the state roads in the city, which I think are in deplorable shape. He would say S.H.A., like many state transportation agencies, has a huge backlog of projects. The initial indication, Darryl and I both had separate conversations with an S.H.A. official, was that they have a list of projects, I think one was referred to as their XS-list and something else, and that those would probably be the first ones. We did ask if they could basically kind of drive the state roads in Tacoma Park to basically take a look at them. She happened to be out, Councilmember Wright, checking the signals at Piney Branch in Philadelphia, so she agreed to take a swing through Tacoma Park. And I think, Darryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but Ethan Allen was one in particular that she felt kind of deserved another look at, the pavement condition, and whether or not that might move up the list. But I still don't think we have a clear indication of where that rates compared to other state projects. The way that S.H.A. also does it is they basically get their pot of money and they distribute that as far as they can. The original question that I had posed was if the city council were to kind of throw your support for federal stimulus funding beyond, behind state roads in Tacoma Park, how would S.H.A. handle that? And they basically do not necessarily earmark funding. They have this list, and whatever funding they get, they'll just sort of work their way down, somewhat similar to what we do with our own street repair funding. So I think that's certainly something, you know, we could consider advocating for, was just to hope that S.H.A. gets as big a pot of money as possible, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee that it would go to Tacoma Park. The mayor was alluding to a conversation he and I have had with one of the hospital officials. Obviously, they have tremendous stormwater problems on their property that are going to be extremely expensive to fix. The hospital had suggested or inquired whether or not doing any of kind of stormwater enhancements on their property might qualify for stimulus funding, and what the council's thoughts might be about the city advocating for that. I think that's about as far as the discussions that I'm aware of have gone. There was no commitment made, and they do think that they would have some plans ready in a very short period of time, that if funding was obtained, they could move forward. Darryl, is there anything that you wanted to add?
I'd also remind my colleagues that one of the things that we wanted to try and do, whether through this discussion or other means, was to work with State Highway to get them to do something with repaving Carroll Avenue after WSSC is finished, given that that was not part of the contract with WSSC.
We did have some information on that I'd like to have Darryl share, that came up during our conversations with the S.H.A. official.
At this point, it's still being reviewed by the appropriate person within State Highway, but State Highway's interpretation of the permit that they provided to WSSC is that they require repaving of the road at the end of the permit, and when they allow longitudinal trenches in a road surface, you're not allowed to do a permanent patch, according to State Highway rules and regulations. They couldn't, at the point I talked to them today, clarify whether or not they would have required a single-lane pavement versus, you know, whichever side of the lane the trench is on, that's the lane that would get paved. That differs from the information we've gotten from WSSC. Basically, WSSC considers a section of Carroll Avenue between Lincoln and the Junction completed as far as their permit requirements from State Highway for their water main replacement. And what you see there is not quite a permanent patch over a trench, but it's the equivalent of, I would estimate, and it certainly was not a milling and paving of a road surface. So they're currently looking into that. It was the State Highway reps understanding that the permit would have required milling and paving. WSSC didn't believe so, but she didn't have the document in hand to verify that point of view. So they're still looking into it, and we're supposed to get a call back later in the week to clarify what the permit requirement would have been for Carroll Avenue for WSSC work.
Thank you. That's more hopeful than I anticipated. Councilmember Wright.
Just a clarifying question. Would that go all the way from Lincoln? Because didn't they do work all the way down to Westmoreland?
Yes, they, they've done work down to Westmoreland, but they're not as far along in that work. The work that they were able to complete from Lincoln to the Junction actually replaced the water main and put in the house connections. What they've been doing from Westmoreland along Carroll and what they'll be doing in front of the Junction area was just replacing the water main. They haven't done the, the house connections at all. So if you remember the process from the first Carroll Avenue construction project, there's very many phases, and it's confusing to the observer because it keeps sort of coming and going and coming back again. So you'll see that on, throughout the other parts of Carroll Avenue. They've laid, they cut the, cut the trench, they replace the pipe, they continue forward, and then they go back again. And at each individual house and water main, they do an excavation, they replace the house connection. And then finally, at the end of that, they have to verify that the work has been done completely. So it'd be several more steps before they're ready to patch.
But the same logic would hold true, that if State Highway...
Yes.
Normal operating...
Right. The permit requirements would have been the same for the entire stretch of project from Westmoreland to Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you.
So are there any other kind of general questions before we talk about what, if anything, we want to advocate for, do, resolve? Councilmember Wright.
Just, I guess the question in my mind about the stimulus is, the stuff in MML now is very focused on money that could go directly to a municipality, as opposed to money that could be spent through one of the stimulus programs within the municipality. For example, there's a lot of talk about green retrofits of buildings, government and non-government buildings. We know we have a lot of older apartment buildings in Tacoma Park. Is that the type of thing that also would be eligible for something? Is that the type of thing that also would be eligible for some stimulus package? And how do we, that doesn't kind of fit in the M M L framework that they've outlined, but we might want to figure out advocating for that also, depending on what actually ends up in the stimulus bill. That's kind of sort of a question also, like, is that how we should think about it? I guess.
I think that's ultimately up to the council. I mean, I think if there's projects such as that, that you feel are important, even if the city is not a direct financial recipient, then I think that's certainly appropriate to include in whatever resolution the council chooses to adopt. Right now, I think we're all sort of flying blind, because there's so much, you know, going back and forth. So I think we just felt as a staff, it was important to at least have some discussion. And then once the bill's adopted, I think there may be a very short period of time to try to analyze it and figure out what qualifies and what doesn't.
I guess, just piggybacking on that, as you come up with your list in these various categories, I think that's what's going to happen. We're going to see what happens, and then if you want to just pick from that list, to whichever category you can go into and move it along significantly quickly, and not have you come back, do a new resolution or something. Just be able to have a listing of things that you can check with you quickly on and move forward.
And so procedurally, would it be better for staff to have the council adopt a resolution with a number of items in it, or to just have this discussion and an additional back and forth before we do a resolution that says, here's what we want? Because I imagine that the timing of a resolution would need to, would be determined a lot by how long it takes for the conference committee on the Hill to come up with the final bill, and to know where things might fit.
I think just any general direction you can give us would probably be helpful. I just pulled from Councilmember Robinson's stack of paper. I think the memo that, or letter that I was alluding to earlier, which is from the Maryland Department of the Environment. And even though they recognize that there's still a lot of uncertainty about the federal stimulus projects, they are essentially doing what they're referring to as a financial assistance pre-application form, and it's due by February 28th. So I think while everyone's trying to sort out the rules, some of the state agencies are certainly anticipating getting money. And this letter basically notes that federal stimulus projects for water quality and drinking water can only be selected through this process. So this is a case where clearly, if you're trying to get money, you have to basically submit through the state agency. As Councilmember Wright was alluding to, there will be no direct money flowing to the municipalities. So I don't know, Suzanne, if you have a different feeling, but my guess is if you can just give us some general guidance, recognizing that the resolution we'll probably bring forward may include projects that ultimately may not qualify. But I'm just concerned if we don't at least have some general discussion with the council, we may find ourselves faced with deadlines without your direction, and uncomfortable about applying.
Okay. Further comments? Do you have any thought as to how best to give the best direction possible tonight? Councilmember Wright?
I'm thinking of the junction and the city lot and the end of the firehouse rebuild, but I don't see how, I'm having a hard time thinking about how to use money in that project, because it's a year and a half in the future. But that's what's mostly on my mind, the thing I would like to see done in the best possible way.
Councilmember Sniffer?
I think that having a extra-long list, and then the city staff picking those that are most likely to be approved is really a good way to go. Because I can imagine that, depending on exactly how the stimulus is written, some of these may rise to the top and others may not. You may be able to reframe the safe sidewalk one to look like something else that fits in the, in it.
Councilmember Sniffer? Oh, sorry. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, SS.
Although I would like to kind of give priority to stormwater issues, because that seems to be an area that we're constantly struggling to have enough money to fund stormwater projects. That would be my personal preference, but I tend to agree with Councilmember Sniffer that leave it in the, to the discretion of the city manager, what is going to be, in her opinion, going to be the best way to structure it for the state.
Councilmember Clay?
I think I agree with that as well. I do want to say that back to the S's, street sidewalks and stormwater are things that I think we could really use a lot of help with. We have a lot more work in those three areas than we have funding for over the next several years. So I would, I would look for opportunities in those areas.
City manager, have any?
No, I was just going to share with the council. One of the issues that I asked about on Friday, when I was talking to the S H A official, had to do with the Piney Branch Road sidewalk, which I know Councilmember Wright and I have had a number of discussions and email exchanges with. My sense from her is that S H A is probably expecting funding to be flowing into a variety of kind of road accounts. They do not, they don't have hardly any money at this point that's budgeted statewide for sidewalks along state highways. My sense from talking to her is that they do not expect that to change with any stimulus funding, that it will still flow more to roads. And then we just have to see where our roads stack up relative to other roads in the state. I asked about the city, if the opportunity presented itself, pursuing funding for the Piney Branch Road sidewalk, which is obviously along the state road, and if they had any concerns about that. Trying to paraphrase her, basically, if we had an opportunity to get funding to build a sidewalk along that road, they'd be all for that. We'd have their support. I just didn't get much sense from her that S H A actually getting funding for that purpose was very likely. So I think as we look to see what comes out of the stimulus package, I think we should look for whatever opportunities there might be for that particular project, or sidewalks in general, along state roads, for the city to actually be able to directly petition for that funding. Because I don't think it'll be flowing through S H A.
Other comments or the thoughts? You have what you need? Do we need to give you more?
I think I'm okay, but I think Councilmember Wright had a comment.
I agree with the long list approach, so maybe we can, if we have items that we think would be good, that we think of outside the meeting, we can just send them to the city manager. And then that can be kind of compiled, and that's, depending on what comes out of the bill. One other thought I just had is, because the kind of shovel-ready aspect or already bid is a big deal, although we know, for example, that we have a lot of sidewalks in here, we would like to have a place based on the meeting last Thursday, right? Or in here, we know that there's a lot of stormwater work we want to do, those things are probably not close to being out of the street forbid, right?
We do have some flexibility in that, in that our large projects, particularly street restoration, as well as most of our stormwater work, is done through a contract who we award an indefinite quantity of bid to. So we have a contractor currently on file and a valid, you know, bid competitively awarded bid price. He does pay Davis Bacon rates, so we're pretty much ready to go with most typical concrete, asphalt, construction-type projects, be it street, sidewalk, or stormwater. So we have, you know, we have our ducks in a row in that regard, and have a contractor who qualifies to meet, to meet those contract requirements.
I would just add, and one of the things obviously we've been pushing for very hard, and as the mayor noted, he will be testifying before the county council tomorrow evening, has to do with our bridges. I met with the city engineer for about an hour or so last week to talk about it. We do have a very specific list of the improvements that are needed for both bridges. He noted that the company that did the Maple Avenue pedestrian walkway, highway and safety, does have an existing contract with either Park and Planning or Montgomery County, I don't recall which. So that's another example of a fairly expensive project, combined about $335,000, where we would have the opportunity to basically piggyback on existing contract and move very quickly.
Good. Okay. Any other comments on this item? Okay. We have one remaining item for the work session, which is a, trying to wrap up the strategic plan and council priority discussion. And given that it's one item, we're a little early, but what I'd like to do is take a five-minute break, and then come back and do that item, rather than try and find a spot to break in the middle. So we can take a short break, and we'll be back very soon. Again, this is the, I don't know, I'll venture a guess, maybe the fifth time, sixth time, we talked about the draft strategic plan and our priorities. And I'm hopeful that, since we've cleared the decks for the rest of the evening, that we can do what we need to do tonight and get this ready for primetime. And I'd like to let Councilmember Clay say whatever she wants to say, since she and I were the two who met with the city manager and the deputy city manager in trying to take us from our last discussion to this discussion. And I would say that Councilmember Clay has a very definite and clear sense of where we've been and where we're going, and so, take it away.
Okay. Just a brief recap. We started this project by putting everything on three-by-five index cards at Reuben's house with Carrie and I, and trying to think, and I think we tried very hard to think about the different things that the council, were important to different council members, to try to get a good representation. Not to cover everything, but to just get us started and get a structure out there. And we followed the, we got three samples that were put together by the city as recommendations, which I think came from the planning department. And the one that we liked the best was the one from Colorado Springs, in the state of Colorado. And we kind of used that as a model as we worked along. And from that meeting, then, we put together both a matrix and a draft form, which included the, our overarching goals, which we put into, I think originally, we started with three words, sustainability, livability, and accountability. And we kind of expanded on the, what we meant by accountability. And from there, we came together, and a couple other council members added, Josh did some some serious additions around the executive summary, and some of the assumptions. And I know Reuben was very engaged on the, on the indicators portion, and people added their priority projects. And at that point, then, we handed it off to the city staff and asked them to help fill in the gaps around the priority projects and provide some commentary back to us. We recognized that we, you know, we didn't completely fill out the matrix. That was actually by intent, so that it wouldn't have all been done by three people, and that everyone would have a chance to provide their, their input once we had a framework set. And the last time we got together, we were looking at the document and kind of going through it piece by piece, and decided to have a smaller group come back and look at it again. So Mayor Williams and myself, we did that, we sat down and started to talk about it and went through piece by piece. We added in all the comments from that evening, from that council meeting, cleaned the document so it didn't have all the strike-throughs and everything. And the document that we have now represents the consensus that we had come to on the, on the points where we had some consensus at the last council meeting. Then the city came back in, and we asked them to please take another look at the priority projects. I think, from my perspective, the city took maybe a little more of a, the city staff took a little more of a hands-off approach to it than what we were really thinking about. And so they, they came back in and actually added some more in the priority projects, and laid out some pieces in the timelines, and added some pieces, and made some, some more comments about what we thought might work and not work, and came up with this matrix, which is now kind of the timeline for the projects, for the priority projects. So now we have two documents. We have, we have this document, which is the culmination of all of the things that we have agreed to. And we have this document, which is the, what exists now, the priority projects and the, and the timeline. How am I doing so far? Mayor? Okay?
Good. I think what everybody has is those integrated.
Yes. This is, oh, is the timeline integrated in?
Yes.
Excellent. And then I brought in some samples from where I work. I'm sorry I didn't bring the HUD samples, because I actually worked on the HUD strategic plan. But I work at the Corporation for National and Community Service, and so I brought in three items, which is kind of where I thought we were going. And I think Bruce has a set, and I don't know if Barbara has her set down here, but I have a set I can pass around. And, and the city staff made color copies of the one piece for you. And this is kind of what I was thinking we would pare it down to in terms of a basic handout for people, so we didn't have to print a bunch of, you know, 30-page strategic plans. And we do a nice handout that essentially looks at, for the corporation, their initiatives are, one of them, for example, is mobilizing more volunteers. But, you know, ours is sustainability. And so we would have that there, and they have a description of what that is, national targets and corporation targets, and we could put in here what are, a couple of our priority projects, essentially. So people could see, like, this is where we're going, here's a couple of things that we're doing with that. And it could be a nice fold-out brochure, and then on the backside of it, it's got some of the mission stuff and the guiding principles, and a little bit about each of the places. So we do a little bit about our departments and what they do, maybe some contact information if we wanted to, but something that'd be a nice handout brochure proposal. And then they have the full-fledged strategic plan that contains all the information, which would contain all of the projects, the assumptions, the indicators, essentially the text, like we have it here, and maybe with some more graphic elements and timelines, some more information about how we're going to do the indicators, where the information is coming from. And then finally, at some point, we might get to the point where they also do the citizens' report on performance and financial results. And we have a lot, I have a lot of constituents who ask questions about, you know, performance and budget and different things like this. And, you know, the corporation is an $800 million agency, and their report is, you know, 12 pages long. It's very, it's a very consumable piece, and we could, I don't necessarily, we do this this year, but, you know, down the road, we could think about taking some of the elements that we've been working on. I know the staff has done a lot of work in making our budget look a little bit different with the categories and indicators and all of that kind of thing. And it, it would feed very nicely into a citizens' report that we might do maybe in a year or two, after we kind of get the strategic plan up and rolling. So I'll pass these around.
You can pass yours that way, and I'll pass these this way?
All right.
Where does that leave me?
I think you get it after Josh.
You get them when they all come back, and you get both copies.
You have to recycle them properly. This is, you know, expensive colored paper. Do you want me to say more?
You want to say more?
I guess the last thing I would say is that when... I guess the last thing I would say is that when we started on this, we talked about trying to make it a really collaborative process across the council and with the staff. And I think, I'm really happy that everybody worked really hard at that and everybody did contribute. And I think having listened to folks, that I think we now have a document that really reflects the things that, it has something for everybody that everybody's interested in and reflects all of the agreements that we have come to. And the staff has been incredibly helpful in, in getting us to this point, and I, I very much appreciate that. I look forward to having this document move, move forward into the future so that we can use it to drive our, our policies and make statements about who we are and where we're going in the community. And people will talk about green branding and different things like that, and it all kind of feeds into all of that. And so I, I, I'm, I'm happy that we've gotten as, as far as we, as we have with the collaborative process.
And it'll also be very important in driving our budget discussions.
Yes. I, I think the one, the one piece that, that may need some work or maybe some revision in future years is the indicators piece, as we kind of go out and see what data is, is really readily available to us. And Ruben had said that he would, he would work on some of that. I think right now, we've got it pared down to what's doable with maybe a couple of questions on things, but I think it's, it's good for, for a first start to get things rolling. And, and we may find that after a year, we'll have to look for the data points that will help us actually capture information about what it is we've been doing.
And I'll just add that I think we all recognize that this will be an ongoing process, an ongoing document that'll get modified at least every year. And so we don't, I don't think we're trying to come up with the, a tablet that gets put in stone in front of the building and that's that. So I think at this point, what we want to do is have a discussion that kind of can make sure that we've got all the right points in here, that we, that there's anything additional that we need to do, that we identify it, and that we can have this ready for more than just a draft. We can deal with cleaning up some of the language, some of the formatting, and have it ready to get additional comments from the public and adopt and get going on this. So who has comments that they would like to make? Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. I'm kind of excited after listening to Councilmember Clay's introduction to this. It makes it feel like we've accomplished our goal of getting the strategic plan in place for, in time for our budget process. And I really hope that by the end of the evening, we're able to agree to a few minor changes to this document and be ready to actually put it into, if not stone, at least on the permanent paper for the, for this year and something we could use for the budget process. I have just a couple of questions, comments, things that, actually, I think we discussed the last time we were here, but didn't make the, the current version, I want to bring them up again. I'm over in the livable community section. We don't have page numbers, so that will have to do to get you there. On the page that has livable community at the top, under strategies, I see a number that says continue, continue, continue police actions, continue to use community policing. Again, I think that's a value judgment to say continue. I know that we don't do that in many other areas of this document. And I think it's, it gives a misimpression to other areas beside, I think it's primarily the police department where we use the word continue. And we don't do it in some of the other departments. I think it gives the misimpression that we're thinking that the other departments don't do those things now. I think we'd be better to just drop the word continue and say that, you know, we want to use community policing to work in partnership with, with residents and not have to make a judgment on whether we do it now or do it well enough or don't do it well enough.
Yeah. And I, and I think that, that probably is one of those things where, as we've talked about it before, that we'll have a, a number of those where there were some, some items like that, that we just need, need to make sure to catch. I think we, we tended to agree with those and we, if we, if we note them tonight. What, what I would take as the way to operate here on, on those types of points is if people want to point those out so that we make sure that they're on a current list, and if somebody says no, I disagree with that, we'll get into a little bit more. But if everybody agrees, we can just kind of skip across that and keep going.
Okay. I thank you. And I, and I don't plan to point out each of those individually. I think that staff can find this pretty easily. On the bottom of the same page, on number 11 and 12, whereas all the other points seem to have full sentences, 11 and 12 are not full sentences. I think they should be.
There's a couple of elevens there.
Pardon?
There's a couple of elevens.
Oh, and if you, that was okay. I'm talking about the first 11 and 12. Okay. Are not full sentences, and I think they, they ought to be if the rest are. I like parallels. You found what I am?
Yep.
Moving over to the next page, under the second number 11, the last bullet says identify and resolving. I think there's just a grammatical error in there.
We, we didn't go through the grammar yet.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
I won't go through the rest then.
Just note it, man.
Second, okay. Second number 12, which is the 12 that's on the top of that page, or near the top of the page. The first bullet is maximize use of the common park-operated recreation facilities. I thought during our last discussion, we talked about leaving out the hyphen-operated and just park recreation facilities.
Yeah, we did.
I know that during the, the last draft, or the previous draft, the pool was included in that list, the community center, recreation centers, amazing fields and parks. I think a pool belongs in there. If we drop the dash-operated, it doesn't necessarily have to be there as, as one of the examples. And then number 13 on that page, it says ensure that all city facilities are well-maintained and that the negative impact to neighborhoods from the public works facility is minimized to the extent possible. I would just like to just drop that last phrase to the extent possible. We lost a council member today. The trap door.
That was a good move.
I wore my seatbelt off.
He, he managed to hit the master off switch.
For those of you in the home audience who are able to see that, Councilmember Bear is back in his chair.
Does that just take up to the extent possible?
Yes. I would just like to drop the last phrase to the extent possible because the phrase "time and resources permitting" would be added to all of these. And that's what you mean here. You got it?
Yes, agreed.
Okay. I'll be quiet then.
Wait, wait. Time and resources permitting?
Every, every one of these would have.
Would assume.
Would, would assume.
Okay.
Time and resources permitting. It's just a.
And then my last is more of a question. That's on the Engage, Responsive and Service-Oriented Government. When you get to that page, you can just flip one more on the back of that page. Number four says develop one indicator per department each year. I'm wondering why we just want one indicator per department? We just say develop indicators for each department each year and let the, those who are developing the indicators determine how many are appropriate?
The, the, that, that, that one was meant to be one performance-based indicator per department per year. That's, that's the genesis of that, that one.
Okay. I'll let you go ahead and take over and argue that point.
Well, it was just the idea that, to try to move towards performance-based budgeting, you didn't want to do it all at once because it could be expensive or it could be difficult or, you know, there might be unanticipated consequences and so on. And so my suggestion was to do, you know, start out slowly and build up, you know? So have one performance-based indicator per, per department per year as a way to.
Could, could we say no to something about, to start up?
Yeah, we should, we should.
That's not our end goal.
No, 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 it's not the end goal.
One per year, but.
Right.
Initially, develop one performance-based indicator per department each year. And that's all. Thank you.
A quick question. Procedural question.
Yes.
Do we want to deal with, like, big items and then go through the smaller ones?
Which were mine.
I was going to say.
You got there before I got there.
You were big to me.
Why don't you talk about what you need to talk about?
Well, I mean, that's. Can we not do, can we not do grammatical? Sorry, Mayor, could I be recognized?
Yes.
Can we not do grammatical and typo?
Right.
Things up here? Just give.
You're big to me.
Just mark them and hand them in.
For, okay, I'll give you an example. The biannual survey is sprinkled throughout the document. And I don't, I don't think the biannual survey will do what we would like it to do for this purpose, because it's not tied to actionable things that the city is doing. It's just a little too, I mean, there are a few cases in which it is, but most things it's not. And it, so it'll be hard to decide whether to continue something, increase it, or decrease it on the basis of a biannual survey. That's why we moved to having key indicators so that we could tie it. So I would propose dropping all references to the biannual survey as part of the indicator sections. We might have it somewhere else as a way of, you know, identifying broader trends or issues that are more global or something like that, some kind of language like that. So that's one of my bigger items.
Everybody agree with that?
No.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have a little discussion on that one then. Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Clay, do you have something?
Could we go through the list and then come back for discussion?
I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep a list for discussion.
Just because it would be great to get everything out now in case.
In case we don't finish.
We're running short on time. My, my concern is that people will have a chance to talk now and they'll talk for half an hour on one thing. If we dump it all and we start running out of time, I think we'll move faster.
Sounds fine to me, and my inclination is to say we're going to finish tonight, however long it takes.
That's a threat.
Yes.
I love it.
Go ahead.
Shall I go on then?
Yes.
Another biggie is there are a couple places where there's reference to assessing the true cost of rent stabilization and the total subsidy provided. And the last time we discussed this, the previous time, I thought we agreed that we would do, we would do this more generally, that we would have cost-effectiveness studies for all the city activities, functions, programs, and that we would do it, you know, on some kind of schedule. So you might do one in each of the departments. So I, I don't see why we would just do it for, do this kind of thing for one relatively small portion of city activities.
Do we, do we need any discussion on that?
I've got a couple of comments to make in that realm, but I can hold on to them.
Okay. You want to continue with it?
In a, in a number of places, the word used is coordinate. And I would like to argue for a stronger word, because I would like something like advocate instead of just coordinate. Coordinate sounds like that's what we're doing now, and I would like to step it up a notch.
Have a couple there, Ruben?
Sure. Under livable communities, number, under strategies, number one says, currently says, coordinated with, with county and state agencies to encourage high-quality social services within the city for city residents. And I would shorten that whole thing to advocate with county and state agencies for high-quality social services for city residents. And I'd skip some of the language there and make it a little stronger. And there are a couple of other places like that where I, I think, you know, we could push a little harder.
That was okay with me?
Yep. Okay.
Where are the other coordinates that you see?
Well, I can, I can mark a few of them. There are not many of them, but, you know, and I don't think you have to do everyone. The other thought that has occurred to me that came in the third one, the Engage, Responsive Service-Oriented Government, is I, I would like to add a strategy, two, two strategies, really. One of them is to explore new media. These are, you know, blogs, video, podcasts, Twitter. There's a rather long list of these kind of things. And it seems like we could make our website a lot more interesting, more modern, if we incorporated some of these. We were just earlier talking about creating frequently asked questions. Those could be done as videos, for example, in addition to just the kind of very print-oriented stuff that we have. And you can use these other new media for pushing out if we had alerts of some kind. There's text messaging, there's Twitter, there's a number of these RSS feeds, there's a number of things we could be doing that would push stuff out. The, the other thing in this same section as a strategy is something I'd love to get feedback from other council members on. But I'd like to have a specific strategy of encouraging experimentation by city staff that is sort of explicit recognition of the value of trying out new things. And the way to make that happen concretely is you have to also not just tell people if you have a great idea, why don't we try it? You have to also say, you're not going to be penalized for failure. So you have to explicitly encapsulate the whole thing with the expectation that this is an, an experiment. It's not going to be permanent city policy or a permanent city activity until we see whether it works or not, but we're going to try it out. And then, and then staff will be encouraged to suggest these things because they're not going to be, you know, well, that didn't work out, so I'm going to, you know, not give you a pay increase next year. Instead, you'll be encouraged for, that was an interesting idea, it just didn't happen to pan out. So I'd like to, I'd like to see as a particular, particularized strategy, one each department each year, that the department come up with something new to try, to experiment with under this kind of guideline. And the rest are, the rest are pretty small, so I'll just, I'll hold on.
Councilmember Robinson?
I tried to reread this with the current economic climate in mind, particularly the assumptions. And most of. And mostly, it rang true to me, although some of the things, the property tax rate and valuation of housing and so forth, started to, in my worst dreams, started to not pull together. And meanwhile, I've been reading about kind of an entrepreneurial attitude that some cities take in the United States to try to bolster their budgets by tackling services, energy services, like municipalization of energy that we've discussed here in the past or that the council has discussed in the past. And in general, I don't have, I don't really have any specifics to add because I think it's a good document. But in general, I'd like to throw in that notion of entrepreneurial attitude. And it falls in line with what you said, Ruben, about the, there's no, there's nothing wrong with a little R and D. And if we have R and D, or try to experiment, with that in mind, how to provide services to our constituents and actually bring money back in, like the municipalization of the energy, I think will be well served. I don't, I'm not really proposing that we put that into this document because it's in pretty good shape, but I just want to throw that out there. That's where I'd like to see this document head in some way in the future. Otherwise, I think it's great.
You have some comments? Councilmember Clay?
They're short. Under key indicators for sustainability, I was wondering how we're going to measure the city government and citywide greenhouse gas emissions?
Yeah.
And the other one is, under key indicators, the city was concerned about how we were going to measure ward participation in recreation programs as a percentage increase by a percent each year. And if we can't do that, we should probably strike that now.
Where was that second one?
It's on the backside of the end of livable communities, key indicator eight.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Seaman?
On the second one, on measuring participation in the recreation programs, I would expect that when individuals register for programs, that we can capture their address and it's a mere matter of software to figure out what ward they're in.
Yeah, we've certainly talked about that, and for those things where there's registration, we certainly will have those numbers. The, one of the questions has come up about the more community event drop-in kinds of activities are harder to find out, you know, where people come from. So we would just be clear about which items, that it doesn't cover all recreation activities, but does recover, it does identify those where we know who they are.
Right, we're not even sure whether they're city residents.
That's right.
But who goes to the folk festival?
Councilmember Wright?
I don't know when we're going to get back to discussing the items that Ruben raised. I don't know if I should make my points now or wait till he answers. But one question I, first I had a question, it's just kind of logistical, how the documents are laid out. Am I correct in that the priority projects listed in the text portion are, aren't all the priority projects? Because then there's some priority projects that show up in the grid that aren't in the text portion. Are those supposed to line up and we just need to go back and edit it again? Or are those priority projects that are listed in the text, which would be more important than the priority project listed in the text? Isn't understandable? Like, that would be, hey, if that's what we're trying to express.
I think we didn't quite get to the match part.
Okay.
And part of it was us as city staff trying to think about how we would really be able to categorize it for operations. So some of those things that are in the grid that you see that are more specific may need to go back over to priority projects list if that's what you agree to. And, you know, and if there's some other mismatch, we need to work on it. But that, it was kind of us taking what we thought was the sense of it, if it didn't quite match and putting it in the grid. So it hasn't quite been gelled yet.
Yeah, because it definitely seems like the grid is more exhaustive than the text. And when I read the text, there were things, specific things that I thought we'd agreed to that were missing, but then when I looked at the grid, they were actually in there. So I'm okay as long as the grid, what's in the grid now is what's...
I think, I think from a... Right, and I think from the staff perspective, you know, we were certainly focused on what's in the grid. And of course, as has been mentioned before, there's many other things that we do that help meet the goals that aren't listed. But just in terms of implementing that, those lists, we tried to do our best job of getting them to the grid.
And the grid was created by the four of us going through the priority projects and kind of prioritizing those priority projects.
Under sustainability, the one, when you go to priority projects, or item number two, I didn't think we had agreed to, I thought we had agreed to two areas within the city being development-focused, New Hampshire Avenue. I didn't realize that, I didn't think we'd agreed that we would be so specific as just the junction in the parking lot. I thought it was that as part of the Old Town, kind of from the junction to the Old Town area, meeting focus overall.
I mean, obviously, the ultimate language is going to be at the council's discretion. I know when we talked about it at a staff level, one of the things that Sarah and I talked about is the fact that the city does own the parking lot in the junction. So from a redevelopment standpoint, assuming the council wishes to proceed with selling the property, there's kind of a more immediate opportunity to define what you would like to see on that site and to go through the RFP process. So I don't know that they're mutually exclusive, but we have pulled out the parking lot as a specific project because that is something we can control since we own the property.
Just to double check, though, the way that we had it in the grid, we had New Hampshire Avenue in the near term, kind of in that FY 2010, as, because we're doing it now, we're focused on it now, and then the next phase related to the city-owned parking lot we had in the midterm portion.
Right, I think my point is there that that loses the, that it's not just about the lot, it's actually about the entire junction, it's about thinking about how do you use the park authority or not in that, you know, from the junction all the way to Old Town, all those, how do you continue to encourage redevelopment and improvement from the junction to Old Town?
A quick clarification. It seems like you're asking, so there should be like a strategy part that talks about redevelopment because the strategies are a bit more broad? And then a priority project out of that particular strategy might be this. But what you're saying is, I think, you want to make sure we still have the big global plan that would include not just this, but could include other things that we think of.
Right, I mean, I guess there's redevelopment in New Hampshire Avenue corridor, you could just define it as broadly as redevelopment of the Old Town or Main Street corridor.
Right.
And yes, the lot would be a specific project.
Within that.
That you would...
Okay, I got you.
Strategy number one is that strategy.
Right, the question is, do you want more specificity to that strategy number one? Or does it somehow not give to you what you were describing?
I guess I look at it from the perspective of ongoing focus and what, if one of us comes back in a year and a half and says, hey, why aren't we doing X, Y, and Z? And someone says, hey, well, it's not in the strategic plan under priority projects, we're only going to focus on the city lot, then I think that's the kind of, so I would just want to define it properly about what we're... So to me, that does suggest that you need a little bit more language in the priority project area to...
I think in general...
Time and resources permitting.
Permitting.
I would say that the staff's response back to us is that we're going to have that as a broad strategy, and then we're going to do the Tacoma Junction, and we're going to continue the investment that we have rolling in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, and then we're going to do a startup of that same level of effort in the junction to Old Town that we better be prepared to fork over three more employees.
But I, I'm not suggesting that we need the same level of effort in, I'll call it the Main Street corridor, because that's how it's designated in the historic Main Street. Thanks to much hard work and resources from the city, we're further along there than we would like to be around New Hampshire. But time and resources permitting, I mean, here's always the...
And also remembering that at that point in a year and a half, when somebody says, well, hey, what about this other thing? The proper response will be, well, we're going to revisit the strategic plan and see how it needs to be adjusted. And so even though we don't have something in here now, there's always the chance to change the strategy, change the priority as we go down the road.
Two other comments before we go back to Ruben's issues, or just, one is the, my understanding of the greenhouse gas measurement was that COG was going to have to do, is in the process of figuring out how to do that anyway. At least they talked about it when they presented to us.
Yes.
And the idea was that we could hopefully piggyback with COG to do that. So maybe we put in parentheses in partnership with COG. But I understand, I agree with you that if just the city's out there trying to get from Pepco, for example, electricity usage numbers, or it's probably even more greenhouse gas emissions per kilowatt hour used or something, it'll all apart, forget about it, right?
Yeah.
My thoughts, do you get anything on Pepco?
Yeah, I was...
Do you have any part of that?
I was a part of the working group that was trying to put all that together in whenever it was, 2000. And the thing that held up the report the longest was trying to come up with that information and extrapolate from the level of the data that Pepco could give and other utilities could give or not give to come up with meaningful numbers. And on a regional basis, it's going to be much more guideable to do it and just say that we're part of that.
A specific suggestion on that might be to include that as a priority project, explore measurement of, and then greenhouse gases, other kinds of emissions, et cetera. Because what almost certainly will happen is that the technology for measuring this stuff and people will learn how to do it in the next few years because it is very important. COG may come up with a methodology for, even if they don't have it now. So we might do a priority project that's a five-year plan that includes that, or, you know, maybe slightly change number three in here, the priority project, to include some kind of measurement component.
On this, I think the comment that we received from Darryl Braithwaite was that between the folks, the technical experts at COG and the state of Maryland, that that's, that they are investigating those things, would you be asking us to develop the technical expertise to do that?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's not something that is easy for us to do, I think.
No, I think it makes no sense. We should build on what other people are doing.
And then the other just little point about this idea, the new ideas are encouraging people to experiment. I'm all for that and not punishing them when they don't go well. We also have to make sure the ones that really go well, we recognize and acknowledge those because otherwise you can get into this thing of people just trying things and failure becomes common and success becomes rare, very rare. And we want to reward the success and make sure that people, as they're experimenting, have an eye towards it being successful.
And I interject, one thing on, and this is not just because the junction's in my ward and the rest of Main Street's in yours, Josh, but the city's been looking at the junction and that city-owned lot for a long time.
Ever since we bought it.
Ten years, since we bought it.
We've been recording.
More than ten years, and then we had long before that. So, and because the firehouse is finally being rebuilt, and because that'll be done in a year and a half, maybe, there's a great sense of anticipation about that lot. So it's an opportunity, and to me, that's a good reason to have it as a priority project. And I believe that it will spin off good things like parking authority, if that's appropriate, or ways to give the city development expertise, or at least collaboration with developers and build on that. And that that will work, that will be to our benefit when we look at the rest of Main Street and at New Hampshire Avenue. So I'm glad it's in there like that. I don't know, I don't know that we...
Like that, where it doesn't mention, it says in the junction?
It says in the city-owned parking lot as a priority project, yes. I believe that that's a good priority project, that we deal with the city-owned parking lot, or the city-owned...
But you don't think that should be in the context or include the rest of the junction?
It will.
Because it's written here, it doesn't.
It will.
Well, the way it's written here, it doesn't, so...
Well, no, the way it's written here, it just means we pay attention to that lot. I mean, I, I, I don't, how would you say you would rephrase it? How would you rephrase it?
I already expressed that I would rephrase it.
Refresh my memory.
I was saying that it should be broader, it should be something like it's stated around New Hampshire Avenue, it should be redevelopment of the Main Street corridor, it should remain a priority project.
Well, I don't know, I guess we just disagree on that one.
I'm not saying we shouldn't be focused on that, I'm just saying that we should limit ourselves.
If I can just cover one or two quick things that I have made note of. One of the things that I think I mentioned previously in a general way, and I have some specific recommendations that I can make sure get in here, but it was dealing with wherever in any, anywhere in this document where it talks about we, like in the engaged responsive and service-oriented government, at the end where it talks about measuring how we are doing it, meeting those needs, and there's just a number of places where it still gets it, we. So it's a hard concept to stick in the middle of the thing where all of a sudden, who is we? So I have specific recommendations on those things. One other thing that is in here...
Did you change it to you? Yeah, I'd like to share whatever that is when we have it.
My, just as an example, at the end of that engaged responsive and service-oriented government, the last part could be, instead of measuring how we are doing it, meeting those needs, it would be by measuring progress in meeting those needs. Other one in the sustainability section. Maybe it was in the, it's the last page, the last page of the sustainability section. I didn't mark it very well on my own copy, but there's mention of a committee on sustainability. And I thought, wait a minute, where did, where we, should that come out of there?
Yeah, I think we were discussing that, that the intention here was the committee on the environment, really.
Okay, that's what I thought, but, and I didn't know whether that just was one of those things that we hadn't gotten to in the editing of it, but I wanted to...
I think that's must have been what it was because we did change that in the grid information.
Okay, okay. Do we have other items to cover other than those couple of ones that I had on a list from what Ruben brought up where we had some need for some discussion?
Could I ask for some clarification on some of the pieces?
Sure.
So we all agreed to change the strategy leads to action words and remove the continuings?
Yes.
Yep.
Agree to add, assume time and resources to the, time and resources permitting into the executive summary to... the executive summary to, how are we going to qualify, where is that qualifier going to go?
Well, the way I think of it is, all of these project, projects are going to be, the specific projects are going to be dependent on, you know, time and resources.
So we just need one place to put it to say that's the assumption?
I mean, if you think about it, we don't need to add it to each of the, there should be no language...
And that's what she's saying.
We'll, we'll just add it to the intro essentially.
Yes.
Somewhere up in the intro.
That we will do these projects depending on, you know, having the time and money and other resources.
And the same is true with the performance-based indicator per department, per year goes into the intro because it applies to everything.
Yeah, I think that would work too.
And as I recall, it was one performance indicator per department, per year, but not one performance-based indicator per department, per, overreaching goal per year. So not three for everyone, but just one. Okay.
Rebex?
Is the time and, is a good place for time and resources, time and resources permitting on the beginning, under the purpose, after purpose of the plan?
Ruben will figure, Ruben will figure that out when we meet for the last one.
Okay, maybe it's...
Seems like this plan, this plan is supposed to be guiding our allocation of resources, so. Back on your last one on the, uh, performance-based indicators. It was, the concept was initially to be one for...
Right. And then I'm going to leave the two big discussion ones for Bruce to tease out, which would be the references, the biannual survey and the rent stabilization piece, and move on to coordinate, change coordinate to stronger words like advocate. Do we all agree to that?
Or most of them. I think there's one in there that says coordinate the advocacy, so we'll probably work on it. Coordinate the advocacy.
And then we want to add social media to the, whatever accountability became, the Engage, Responsive, Service Oriented Government. And we want to add that as a strategy? And is there a priority project associated with it, or it's a strategy?
Can I just say something? I felt like that was actually in a priority project already because if you look in the grid, and maybe we just need to reword the grid a little bit, it says something like the UAMW's website, so it's up-to-date and user-friendly. Maybe we could elaborate on that to use those current communication technologies.
I think that would work pretty well, actually. Yeah, just to put it...
And that does go along with the, the number five of the priority projects in the list. That, we can add that text in there too because it's, we really were thinking in that same vein.
I would make it a separate one. And I have to say that my, my federal agency is, is go headlong into, into this and that the social media is really different from, what, what they call Web 2.0 is really different from kind of the baseline web working is a different set of tools, it's going to take different sets of training and a different way of thinking about things. I would separate that as a, as a separate priority.
It's quite interactive.
And it's going to have different measure, it's going to have different measures of, of your level of success.
Yeah.
And different need for resources.
I like using the phrase Web 2.0.
Okay.
Well, they're already talking about Web 3, you know. Web 2.0 is, you know...
We don't want to be, we don't want to be outside the...
We better be 4.0 then.
So we're, and then we're going to add a strategy to encourage experimentation and you're going to write the wording for that, right, Ruben?
Sure.
And did we decide what to do about greenhouse gases? Are we going to leave that in or out?
I thought in with the parentheses associated with...
For COG, okay. Remove the we's, change community, committee on sustainability to committee on environment. Okay. You got the ones that we left then?
I think so, and if I don't, you'll let us know. And one other one that I had, it was just a quick suggestion. If you look at the bottom of the executive summary, one of the things that, in the very last line, the, one of the things that engendered a great deal of discussion a number of years ago in, in the COG strategic plan was, in this case, making the city to become a part of vibrant and healthy place in which to live, work and play. And the discussion that COG ended up adding, to make it live, work, play and learn. And I think that's an appropriate one here, given the higher education going on in the city. So I would just suggest that. If I don't hear notes, we can do that. The ones that were left were the, I think we've covered the, did we cover everything about new media?
Yeah.
Okay. And did we cover, yeah, we did cover that. So I only had one here, which was the, about the biannual survey.
As rent control.
And rent incentive.
Okay, okay, that was the other one. So let's do the biannual survey one first. There was, Ruben, you, you were advocating one position, and I think I saw these two people going, that they disagreed with you, so...
Well, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That might result in. I think the staff likes the biannual survey. Could we, could we set it up so that we have indicators that are the performance-based indicators as we've been moving forward, but also use more citywide and, and departmental-wide indicators through the survey or through other kinds of methods that we might identify? So some would be really specific, like the number of percentage increase of residents from specific wards using the recreation department. And it would be measurable for some, from some finite piece of data that we internally collect and that we, you know, we, we control in that sense versus the broader citywide measurements about how the residents, that are more perception-based. So the perceptions of service. And be clear when we're talking about what is this performance-based indicator versus the perceptions of service. Would it be acceptable if we delineated them and documented that way?
I think with a little work, that's, that's a workable idea. I, I don't see it as a key indicator though. I think it's a strategy for improving how the city works because it provides a lot of general guidelines.
What, what is it?
The biannual survey. Knowing, for example, that three of the wards, you know, there's a big difference in how wards are perceived as, is a general thing that we have referred to several different times in the discussion as, well, maybe we should devote more energy to those three wards, kind of general guidance sorts of stuff, rather than the key indicators, which tend to be specific. So you can say this program or this function is either working well or it's not working well.
And I think that supports, I think that supports what she was saying.
Yeah.
That there are two different things and they, we should delineate that and document.
Right.
I also, a word that comes to my mind are feedback loop, although that's too technical, but it's a less formal than the, than the indicators. I'm in favor of Colleen's point.
Yeah, I like it.
I, I like Colleen's point, and originally this thing was that we would be judicious about which item we chose from the resident survey. I don't, I don't think there's a lot in, a lot of them that would be key indicators, but the thing I think about, like, when you look at livability, there is a measure in the citizens' survey about whether people feel safe. And if we're talking about, are we doing, I know you can't point and say this project made us safer or not safer, but that's a management indicator. When it comes down to it, when it comes to safety, it comes down to do people perceive themselves as feeling safe? And the only way to measure that is to ask the, the perception question. And so I think there are a few, a handful of indicators in that survey that we should track and incline with the theme in that context of the lead between the really hard ones associated directly with a program or approach versus broader.
I think that's an excellent example of what I was talking about because it doesn't lead to any change in what we would do, knowing that the city residents feel more or less safe. It isn't, there's nothing specific that it's tied to. But if we also had specific key indicators about what we were doing and the effects of the different things we were doing, like the attack tactical enforcement unit was increased in size, did that have an impact on the amount of crime, for example? Well, then that's a specific thing, which we would expect to, over time, lead to a feeling of being safer. So that we would have the two things that Colleen was suggesting. We'd have the broad thing and then we'd have the more specific stuff that helps us pick, well, maybe we should add another person, or maybe we should take away a person, you know, move people around, that kind of thing, yeah.
This also reminds me in, in some ways of the presentation we had from the health, what was the?
Health impact.
Health impact committee, yeah, last week, where they noted after having done online surveys that the data that came back was really for a certain group of, of, of our citizens. And then they went out in focus groups and got an entirely different kind of sense of what was going on in a different part of the community. So I'm, I'm reminded of that in that they, there was a second kind of outreach. And I don't know that either of those were fit, would fit a specific indicator approach, but it was, it was important, seemed important to them and it was certainly important for me to hear that they had done that and what the results of that second outreach were.
Sure. I just wanted to make it clear, because it's a little bit of a bugaboo of mine, that there's a big difference between the city survey and the Health Services and Impact survey. So the city survey was actually statistically significant and we oversampled for people done by professionals who've done this frequently, we oversampled for populations that are less likely to answer. Versus the Health Services and Impact Committee was a voluntary survey and you can't actually take that data as statistically significant. You can take it as informative, just clear it, make this thing clear.
So do we have what we need on this question that we generally agreed with Colleen's approach? Okay, then the other question was about rent stabilization and whether we want to just kind of measure that one in that way, have it in the context of it's, it's one and other ones get measured in other years? How do we want to deal with that?
Well, the, the, and the discussion on that with the city staff was that we weren't just talking about measuring rent stabilization. What we're talking about is measuring the amount of resources that the city contributes to affordable housing and including everything. So we figure out how much are we putting forth on low-income housing tax credit? And, you know, what is the opportunity cost of the taxes around the rent stabilization? And so we would know what all these different components are and count them towards our contribution towards affordable housing. So the different ways that we, that we do that. And I think we should do that for every department and not just like single out different programs. It's just like, how much are we, as a city, really spending on affordable housing?
And I would...
It's not really specific about rent stabilization.
I would support that across, like you said, all departments because I think that's important, especially in the recreation department, knowing how much each of the programs is costing us and kind of what the benefits of those programs are.
I'm okay with doing it across the other departments. I do think, you know, that's going to take time, so it should prioritize. And the reason I think the affordable housing one should come, if not first, very high up the top of that is because particularly related to rent, rent stabilization, I know this is controversial, I support rent stabilization unless we have an alternative. But it is, it is this weird thing where we are making quite significant contributions to affordable housing through the lost opportunity of the tax revenue associated with, with rent stabilization. And that's not anywhere in the books. I don't even have a sense of like, is that number a million dollars? Is it $2 million? Is it $3 million? And there's nowhere else, I feel like, maybe there's somewhere else in the city budget that other people know. There's nowhere else that I know in the city budget where if someone asks me what it is we're spending, I can at least give them like a ballpark. You know, if you say, well, what does it cost to sweep, sweep the streets? I can say, well, the, the maximum is the entire public works budget, even though I know it's not that. I have no idea what, what it costs to rent stabilization. And that's why I think it should be higher up on that priority list so that we can know what the true cost is and what the true benefit is. And I, I bet that we're spending more, using that as a vehicle for affordable housing, we're probably spending more using that than any other vehicle we're using in the city. And I just think we have a fiduciary responsibility to know what that is.
And you're looking beyond saying, well, you can include the whole housing department budget and you're saying the lost opportunity budget of the possibly lower tax income? Yes.
Yeah, I've always looked on it as multi-family projects are assessed differently and it's, and it's based on the income that they produce. And so when you have rent stabilization, that, that income is low for, lower, therefore the assessment is lower, therefore the taxes are lower. What's, what's the sense of that number?
I have an additional comment on that. That, those are good, I believe those are good points. There's, we have an assumption on, under sustainability, number eight, assumption is we will continue to have ra, rent stabilization in the city. And although I, that's true for some period of time, I wonder, is there any, do we put it, is there, ought we put a time phrase in there that indicates how long we will continue to have rent stabilization in the, in the city? I mean, I would be reluctant to say, put a time number on there, but I'm wondering, in a way, I'm wondering why we have that as an assumption in light of the fact that we don't know the cost.
I would think that the timeframe is the same as it is for all the other items in the strategic plans, with the life and plan.
Life and plan, right.
And I'm not sure, what, what's the, the purpose of knowing the, the cost of the program aside from looking at to see whether we keep rent stabilization? I mean, it's, I don't, I don't see it as being a, a decision that's made just based on the cost. There's obviously, there's benefit to...
Sure.
...the, the rent stabilization program within the city. And I'm wondering if there's another value to determining the cost in a more precise manner?
I, I think I could make that case, which is that when we, when we think about the difficulty that all jurisdictions have in finding the resources to provide affordable housing, one of the ways that we do it, do it is through rent stabilization. And we ought to be able to say to a jurisdiction like the county, we provide an awful lot of affordable housing in Montgomery County. One of the ways that we do that is through rent stabilization and it costs X amount. You could make the case that it, we should get some kind of credit...
Yeah.
...from the county for what we provide there, the, the county would be providing if we weren't here. And you, that we may not win that argument, but I, I think it's a valid thing to say. It's, you know, it's, it's a, it's, in that way, it kind of quantifies the feather in our cap that we're doing more affordable housing than it appears.
And furthermore, something I forgot, based on Josh's kind of note of how much, does it really cost? It also costs us the full amount of the, of the rebate for housing we would get if the county accepted the fact that what we were doing was valid, which is to your, your point. We don't get anything for housing and they, they, as far as I can tell, they don't give us anything for housing because they say we're doing it differently than they would. And that's a spurious, to me, a completely spurious argument on their part. So having it quantified, maybe, maybe we could rectify that. That's, that's what I hear you saying, Bruce. Colleen?
Okay. I just have to say, as a policymaker, the idea that I would want to be purposefully ignorant about what programs cost to implement is kind of baffling to me.
Yeah.
I think that we should know what a program costs, whether it's the library, whether it's the recreation department, whether it's the housing department. And I wouldn't pick one...
And I wouldn't pick one aspect of it and say, no, no, I don't want to know what that is because I'm afraid what people will do with the information about what that costs. I mean, we should know what it costs. We've already had the discussions about rent control. We should know what it costs. I think we should claim credit for it. And if someday it costs us, I don't know, $20,000 per tenant per year, we may in fact decide that there's a better way to do that. But, you know, we need to know that information. I don't think it costs us that much right now. The last study I saw said it costs $800,000 a year in taxes, of which $400,000 are taxes that the city would be collecting. And you could probably take that and extrapolate. That's a lot of money that we're spending on affordable housing, and we should claim credit for that. And we should put that out there and...
This is why I think it should be expanded to include other things. We have a nuclear freeze zone, okay? It's a very important part of Tacoma Park's identity. People move here and tell you, I'm moving here. One of the things that attracted me is because it's a progressive place with a nuclear freeze zone. So the nuclear freeze zone doesn't cost us anything, but it provides a benefit. It makes our city more valuable. I would make the same argument about a lot of the things the city does. We have our own library. I think that makes the city more valuable, a valuable place. And rent control is...
You could make that argument about rent control. And people think it makes the city more valuable.
And rent stabilization is, yeah, because it preserves diversity in the community. And so I think there's a lot of things the city does that have that kind of benefit. They'd be hard to measure. I don't think difficulty of measurement should be a reason for not doing it. So I agree with doing the idea. I just would like to make sure it's in the context of, I want to do this kind of, the costs and subsidies and so on for, we might start with rent stabilization, but I would like to see if that's the first, that's the first one we do, and then we do another one, and then we do another one.
It wasn't intended to be specific to rent stabilization, that, you know, over the last...
I think the concept is the right one.
Yeah, the, over the last several times that people have come and asked us for low-income housing tax credit money, for at least a year and a half, we've been asking, well, how much are we really spending on this? What does this, what's the outlook over the 10-year period? So we've been asking that question. It makes sense that how much money we're putting into affordable housing is one of the first things that we could, could measure in a priority project. And we even talked about, well, what would we do about the rent stabilization and part of it? And for the purposes of this exercise, that we could just extrapolate across the studies that we, that we have any confidence in essentially. We don't have to know to the dollar, but...
It's just there aren't many places that have rent stabilization, so it's hard to...
And I would just say that I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Clay that we should know how much things are costing us. But I think Mr. Sniffer makes a good point, that the nuclear freeze zone is an example. It does cost us because it limits our purchasing by having that policy. And so there is a cost associated with it.
No one has found, no one has found an example where that was true.
Well, I'm saying, you know, people have argued the same for rent stabilization. I think it's good that we do look at them and know, but I think, again, I don't want to see us just focus on one particular program. I think we should do that across the board.
Gotcha. I agree 100% with both what Ruben and Terry have said about not focusing on one program. We should do it across the board. We should, and I think Ruben is agreeing, we should sort of use a general intuitive, back-of-the-envelope calculation about what we might want to prioritize first in those things. And just because they've been mentioned, I'll mention nuclear free and the rent stabilization. If you put those two on a scale, I think any relatively sane person would say the costs associated with the rent stabilization policy and the benefit associated with the rent stabilization policy is greater than the nuclear free policy. And so it probably makes sense for us to look at the rent stabilization policy, cost and benefit first.
How can I argue that if you said I'm going to be insane, audience?
Well, then don't. I won't say what other people say about you, Terry, but you might just be sure to not go.
So it sounds like we have agreement that we want to articulate the overall policy of understanding the costs of some of these things that we don't necessarily have costs on and benefits, and that the largest one of those that anybody has come up with is rent stabilization and the cost of the affordable housing that we are providing. And that if we need to add a little language to make sure that we have that overall policy articulated, great, do we need to do something else with that?
Sure, we probably should come up with a list of other things we might. I mean, I just happened to pick the nuclear freeze zone. You know, how much safety are we buying? We were just talking about safety earlier. We could clearly expand the police force and buy more safety. We want to know, of course, how to do that in some rational sense. Same thing with recreation or, I mean, for example, code enforcement. We decided it was not worth it for the city to do code enforcement. We gave that back to the county. And there, I'm sure there, this, yeah, trash is another one we've talked about a little bit. And this, having some estimate of the costs and benefits of these kinds of activities would help us make those decisions.
I just have the feeling, thinking about all those, that they're a whole lot less specific than coming up with a number that was being identified with...
Trash isn't pretty specific.
I'd like to suggest that this conversation is less and less to do with strategic plans and more and more to do with keeping us from getting out of here tonight and getting a strategic plan in place.
Colleen.
Um, I have to be careful before I talk. Okay, so we talked about the budget process and how the folks come before the council every year and do sort of the whole outlay of the department, but we also talked about not doing such a full-blown review of every department every year. Would it be, and then at one point, we talked about maybe just doing a couple of departments a year. But when thinking about housing and community development, having them do, check out every program they have, you know, in year one, and then nothing again until year six puts all the burden in year one, would it be useful to ask the staff to come back and say, laid out by department and workload, here's some recommendations on the way we could go through all of the department programs on a four-year cycle or five-year cycle, something like that? Or how long would it take us to go through in a reasonable manner and then provide some input on which ones would come first? And would that be useful?
Are you talking about doing a cost-benefit analysis? Is that what you're referring to?
I would, yeah, I think that's, but that would be part of it, but like just a review of the programs. Because we've talked about that as part of the budget cycle. When are we going to review programs to see if we want to reduce programs, keep them the same, increase resources to the programs? Do we want, do we want to do that on a full-blown basis every year? Do we, would we rather spend some energy on a couple of components and cycle it through every few years? I mean, I certainly don't want to review the rent stabilization again anytime in the near future. So like, what would be a cycle? We could put that on a 20-year cycle. What would be the cycle that would be acceptable?
Did we change the code, or is that on a five-year cycle? No.
It's got a cycle.
It's on a cycle.
It's a three- or five-year cycle.
So, you know, there's, what, there's like four or five things that HCD does, there's a, you know, what, two or three or four things that Public Works does, there's a couple of things that Communications does. So would it be useful to timeline that out in this process?
I'll look to the city manager.
I see the wheels are turning.
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, the wheels are grinding to a halt.
Isn't this where the indicators come in? I mean, to me, there's like certain key things that we would...
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it's the indicators, but what I think I hear Colleen saying is sort of that, I mean, I'll just use an example since we have emailed about this. For instance, how much we're spending on, we contract with the county to get a higher level of service for rental housing inspections. I mean, we essentially pay $200,000 roughly a year so that every rental unit in the city is inspected annually. We could turn that over to the county, and you have that happen once every three years. I mean, that's sort of the broader policy question of what you're investing in. Is that what you're getting at, Councilmember Clay? Those type of issues or...
Well, so that would be a part of a review of what's the, what's the, could you go one level up in that department? That's the, is that code enforcement?
That's code, that's the code enforcement division.
So that'd be part of a review of the code enforcement? We wouldn't want to ask that question every year.
No, I don't think so.
But we might want to ask it every four or five years, right?
Well, and I think part of how often you ask that question, I mean, just from a practical standpoint, also depends what you're facing financially. Because I mean, certainly, I think we're going to be pinched like all governmental jurisdictions, or people are concerned about their tax burden. So I mean, to some degree, how often you review it, I think depends on the feedback you're getting from the community and also your own fiscal constraints. I mean, some of that we can certainly just lay out as kind of policy questions for the council, at least to be aware of, that you may or may not wish to consider in the budget process. There's a variety of ways of doing it, I guess, you know, just looking for some direction of what most, might be most helpful for the council.
Councilmember Siemens, then Councilmember Robinson, then Councilmember Sniffer.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to suggest that we have, I think, covered the strategic plan pretty well tonight. And I think the, aside from the last point, which Councilmember Clay brought up, which is, I think, very interesting, is something we should discuss more thoroughly and come up with a plan for understanding the cost of all the things that we do and the decisions we make here at the council. But I would like to suggest that we direct staff to implement the changes that we've talked about tonight, and then help bring it back to us for a vote. And that we table the discussion on costs and benefits and handle that outside of the strategic plan.
Councilmember Robinson.
I agree with Terry. I see that in the priorities, number seven is to assess true total cost of rent stabilization. So that's already in there now. I'm not sure that we were discussing that, or was it? I see, I guess I see this rent stabilization in twice. One is as a priority, a specific priority, and then the others as a key indicator. So my assumption is that seven, we're leaving seven alone, but under indicators, we're letting the staff move toward a cost-benefit culture for each department as they present to us during the budget process. Do I have that right?
I think what we were talking about is striking that...
The priority number seven?
The, no, the indicator.
Indicator number four?
Until we can talk about doing that for each department and how we want to approach that.
Okay, but we're, but we're not talking about striking number seven, which is to assess as a priority.
But if that's what gets us through tonight, I can handle that.
No, I would say, I would, my, personally, I would say, I hadn't heard us talking about it, but I'd leave it in there. I would just leave it as, as is. That's a priority we want to do.
Right.
Number four, I, yeah, I'm with the general drift. I can get the drift about cost-benefit. Seems appropriate to me.
I guess I heard the discussion a little differently than you did, Dan. I thought the discussion was that we would, that our policy would be to come up with a way, you know, procedures and policies and so on for measuring costs and benefits of all kinds of things in the, in the city, programs, activities, functions. But that the first one we would do, comma, and the first one we'll do is, you know, something on rent stabilization. But that was where the discussion went.
I don't see that as good.
Not just rent stabilization, it's the, it's about, it's not about rent, it's about the dollars we're putting in to support affordable housing. So we should remove...
We should quit do that.
Stop talking about rent stabilization. Affordable housing dollars.
Would one option, and I don't have any language particularly in mind, but perhaps Suzanne and I can kind of take a look, and under the sustainability, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing the majority of the council say in different ways is that you just want to have some type of process in place where you systematically sort of review the services, what we spend, what the benefits are, and that rent stabilization or affordable housing may be your first choice. So I was just suggesting that maybe Suzanne and I might be able to try to craft some language under the strategies, under sustainability, and kind of route that back to the council for you to look at.
Sounds good to everybody. And I want to make sure that everybody understands the same thing about where we are and where we're going to go next. We don't want to do this making of vegetarian sausage on camera again.
Vegetarian sausage.
It seems appropriate for...
I think it did well tonight.
Well, yeah, but it's, different people did well at different points, and other people just kind of went, you know, whatever.
We're going to get a report card.
So I think...
Some fell out of their chairs.
Yeah, some fell out of their chairs. So I'll state my sense of where we are on this, and if anybody wants to comment, go We'll, we'll bring back a supposedly final version of the strategic plan that can be available and shared sufficiently that when we vote on adopting it, there will have, it will have been out in public, and it won't be just that we're adopting something without the public's comment. I think this is important enough that we don't want to just treat it like a regular resolution, so that that will drive a timeline a little bit longer than usual. And we'll take whatever additional information that each of us is going to provide. We've said this before on this process, and I'm not sure how well it's worked, but get your comments to the city manager.
Yeah, if you could sign under both Suzanne and myself.
With, you know, whether there are, you know, any of those particular suggestions for language or particular editing points that you have that haven't been addressed to make sure that they get on that master list so that there's a clean scrub. And then, once it gets to that point, you all will share it with the council, and that way, we can kind of double-check to make sure that whatever is on our lists is in there, and then it will go out. I'm assuming it might do something like get on the website, and possibly some, some version of it or all of it will go in the city newsletter. And then we'll schedule some adoption, and in the meantime, we'll work on anybody who has suggestions for putting together the, where did it go? I didn't get mine back, the tri-fold, the quad-fold, the points that would go in other than the full version. And we will work on that in addition. Does that sound right? Councilmember Sniffer.
One clarifying. I just want to be clear. So I have a lot of small comments. And...
We just agree with the net though.
No, no, I, I know.
The staff is going to put through the vegetarian sausage.
That's right. I'll send them to staff, and they'll be put in, track changes, kind of thing.
And if, and if staff sees anything that they think they need to get our input on, they will let us know, and we will provide our comments.
Yeah.
Okay? Anybody want to stay here any later?
No, not at all.
We're adjourned.